Zoning Commission meeting for the lovely village of Hampshire on this May 20, gorgeous May 23rd. Uh, may I have you all, oh, when did we change that? Why we stop the touch of Legion was first?
I use the same templates I was used.
That's first.
It's right after the call order she just said.
If I could have everyone stand for the clergy meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Freeman, if I could ask for a roll call, please. Mr. Ravitch here. Brad here. Mr. Rock present. Self present. Mr. Rosetti?
Here.
Uh, no, actually, uh, for the record, Mr. Hoffman and Neil are absent this evening. Um, so we do have a quorum of the five members present. If I could ask everyone to review the minutes from our last meetings, any questions, comments, corrections?
I do have one correction right off the top. Uh, second paragraph, commission voted to approve, should be approved instead.
Mr. Ravitch has one extraneous P in his last name?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I am going to abstain from the vote to accept the minutes because I can't find the minutes in my packet.
They're either on the email invite or they're online.
Do you have a digital edition?
I, I beg your pardon?
Do you have a digital copy or a physical hard copy?
I don't have anything in my packet. I've got everything else except, uh, except the minutes.
We're set up today.
What time?
I have the agenda. I have the two supplements, but I do not have the minutes, so I will abstain from voting.
All right. Thank you, sir. Change, maybe we'll reset those possibly. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Freeman. We need you with your vote. Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Mr. Brad?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Self, aye. And Mr. Rosetti?
Abstaining.
Four ayes when abstain. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to open our public hearing this evening for the proposed text amendment regarding home occupations.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded. Roll call, please. Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Mr. Brad?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Self. Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Public hearing is open. Mr. Ray, do we have anyone signed, set up to speak publicly?
Yes, uh, before I could, if I could just say for the record that this public hearing was duly posted in the Daily Herald for last meeting on April 24th, yeah, April 25th, uh, on the April 25th meeting, planning zoning commission acted to reschedule the public hearing for tonight's meeting, um, so that the staff can take the matter to the village board for some discussion first. Um, other than that, we do have one speaker here that I presume will speak on this, uh, hearing.
Yes, uh, and?
Mr. Collins? Go ahead. Good luck.
You need to swear. Yes, uh, Mr. Collins, uh, just for the record, uh, because this is a public hearing, I do need to swear you in. So, uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony, uh, or and or evidence that you were about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I will. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, reason for my appearance would be, as you know, I'm, uh, applying to, uh, get approval from the, uh, the village for, as well as by my homeowners association to have a home-based business in my, for zoning, um, that home-based business, uh, uh, as you should know, or don't, if you don't, I'd be happy to answer your questions, is going to be for an FFL dealer, federal firearms list. Um, and, and my conversations with Mr. Schuster, Schuster, uh, as he is the village attorney, as well as my HOA's attorney, I made it clear to him that this, uh, business will not tell, uh, any storage, or any delivery of any firearms, uh, in my home residence.
Okay.
Okay, um, this will be primarily, the basis of this business will be an online sales. The exception that I talked about with him would be in the case of a, uh, FFL, FFL transfer. Um, in the event of an FFL transfer, you had an example, somebody goes to Florida that lives in Hampshire, Illinois, anywhere, um, wants to buy a firearm out of state, they cannot take possession of that firearm in Florida. They have to file for a transfer from one FFL dealer to another. So it would be a temporary possession until pickup. That generally happens, you know, pretty quick.
Good.
So it wouldn't be a long time storage or anything of that nature. It would be just purely to make sure that they've, uh, cleared all necessary backgrounds and so forth. And it's purely for delivery purposes, so.
I forgive my ignorance on, uh, the particular nuances of FFL transfers. How are the firearms transferred? Are they secured, barrel guards, locks, trigger?
Exactly. They have to be secured through even, and, and there's only certain hostages or companies that, uh, US Postal Service does as well, but, uh, they have to do, they have to package that and deliver it a certain way. That firearm should be boxed and so forth. One of the things I'll add is, is that, you know, they're not going to be dropping this on my front step. But I'll be more like, I'm more than likely, I'll be picking it from the post office, signing for it and then delivering it from there. Um, if there's an issue with that being done at my residence, uh, which I don't plan to do too often, I don't want just anybody showing up to my residence anyway, uh, I will more likely pick a third, third site. Um, you know, if there's an issue within, you know, if I end up doing one for a family member or somebody I know in the village that I know is, is fine, would be the case. If I don't know the person, I'll probably pick a third party site.
I know in certain shipments of sensitive deliveries like this, a lot of times the package is sent beforehand and, uh, that package is locked and secured. And then let's say the, the holder of the keys, you know, would stay behind or be, in this case, might be the person while, uh, the shipment itself is blocked. And then obviously the person in Florida has the keys to open that case. Would are any additional rules or regulations on FFL transfers for devices, uh, firearms like that? Is there any sort of two factor securing of the shipment itself? You know, that way it's not just a cardboard box with a firearm. It's, it's a locked box that's shipped.
It's probably more likely going to be shipped like it was, it was, uh, like it was handed over to somebody in, from the manufacturer to somebody and they went in the gun shop. And they are not, there's no trigger guards typically put on those, but they're, um, a closed box or, you know. They're not going to be secured in any way that I think you're indicating in terms of, you know, the trigger guard or barrel lock or anything of that nature. Um.
They're also not transported with library condition.
They are. They are. It would be the same delivery of a firearm as if you were to go into a bookstore.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, for online sales, and I've, I've dealt with a couple of places in, in other towns, even with the online sales, isn't there supposed to be a, not necessarily brick and mortar, but a place where they go to for picking up said, uh, firearms and whatnot like that? I know the ones that I've dealt with, they, they do mainly online sales, but they have to have a brick and mortar place for the delivery or exchange or pickup of, uh, said sales.
That, uh, unless Illinois with their new, uh, licensing requires that, uh, the ATF does not.
Okay.
I have to go through that process. After ATF approval, then Illinois is of approximately three years ago. They now have their own state licensing. So that's another process. So I'm not there yet.
Okay.
The first step, one of the main, besides the research and studying that I've done, uh, to this point on all the laws, uh, first big step is, is this right here. If, if, you know, one of the main reasons ATF denies an applicant is for, um, zoning in their village and or an HOA. So I haven't, uh, obviously started the, uh, application process because I don't point until I, I get approval from the village.
Understood. And like those other few places, that was not something that was village specific. So just probably be aware of that one, that that may be something that you would be required to have, um, with that online sales, so.
I'm sorry, what, what was?
So, I, some sort of physical, physical.
Location?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I, like I said, I've dealt with a couple of them.
Yeah.
Just not here in Hampshire, but.
Was I indicated, unless it has to be an FFL dealer, which I'm not, it's not been indicated to me that I have to, unless the state of Illinois requires to. I, I plan to have a third party site anyway. Now that third party site may not be an FFL dealership, but it won't be, it won't be my residence.
Okay.
Um, if I don't know the individual personally and they're not from the village or I don't know who they are, I don't want to show anybody showing up to.
Understood.
One of the, I'm also a firearms instructor, so I, I teach, uh, concealed carry and, and basically, you know, I have a lot of experience with firearms. I was former law enforcement officer for Kane County Sheriff's Office here in Kane County for 12 years. Um, so I have a, a long history of firearms and instruction and so forth. And I currently teaching, as a matter of fact, is, um, working with the park district here in Hampshire. Um, but, you know, one of the things that, uh, that, uh, you know, we teach us a tremendous amount of safety, you know, so I will exercise that to the full extent.
Mr. Rosetti, any questions, comments, gentlemen, presence in person, any additional questions, comments, deliberation?
Not at this time.
Any answer to ours?
The question or observation I have, and I think you can answer frankly, is, um, at what point, if business is good and you've got six or eight, you know, deals on the line and you've got your transfer fee and, you know, holiday is coming up or whatever, or big meet or shoots coming up and, uh, so, uh, what, where's the magic line where, well, I've got one or two customers and I might have to keep one or two of those in the safe until they come pick them up, or now it's eight. So at what point does it become, warehousing is a grand, you know, word, but at some point you do have, uh.
Inventory.
Inventory, thank you is the word. So I.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't plan to, uh, you know, that requires going out and investing in, uh, bigger safes and that's not cheap and, and I don't, I want those firearms at my house. I really don't. Um, those sales, again, those, those are going to be in, there's third party, um, um, companies that do that and make, and, and you can use the transfers. Um, I don't have any intention. There's, there's, this is not a new concept. I'm not inventing something new here. There's a lot, if you look at FFLs, there's quite a few home-based ones around the country. Yeah, I don't have any intention of storing any, any firearms and this is going to strictly, I don't want a brick and mortar store. That's not the intent of starting out as a small business person and graduating to a brick and mortar store. That's not my intent. And I'll, and I'll add that firearms are going to be a small per, uh, percentage of my sales. There's not a lot of margin in firearms.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's like buying new cars. There's just not, uh, there's just not a lot of margin in, in the firearms. It's requirement to sell so many of them to, to hold your ATF, uh, FFL, uh, or they're, they're going to come talking to you. Um, and I'll do what's required in terms of meeting that quota, but, um, most of the margin is in the smaller products, right? Uh, gun cleaning kits, optics, uh, smaller stuff. There's higher margin and stuff. So I don't have a lot of intention to sell a lot of firearms. So that addresses that to some degree.
Sure.
Yeah.
Ammunition?
Not at this point, no. That doesn't mean I want in the future, but I don't, I don't have the intention to. But if I do, it won't be at this, this location. Because again, that would require me to store that. So.
Anything further? Additional questions for Mr. Collins?
I, I do have one question, Chairman Morocco. The gentleman just said that firearms would be a small portion of the sales. That leads me to believe that he's going to be selling something else. Uh, he mentioned optics. Is that what he's going to be selling or are there more products?
There, there's a various accessories to firearms and the, and the firearm industry makes most of their money off accessories, uh, higher margin business. There's not a lot of margin in firearms, so that's why I made that comment. I don't have an intention to, to sell a lot of firearms because of that. So the accessories, gun cleaning kits, optics, things of that nature.
Do you need an FFL to sell a gun cleaning kit or a, a tinny rail or a?
No, you don't. Just, uh, certain accessories on firearms. Anything that can make up a firearm, anything that, that, that's required.
You would, you would mention that there's a minimum quota that's required to maintain the FFL.
I don't know what that quota is. Uh, I, I don't, um, I know that if you're not, if you're just selling to family and friends, the ATF is going to come knocking on your door. Um, they will, they don't want you doing this as a hobby so that you can buy guns cheaper than going to the gun store. They want legitimate businesses.
And the idea is that for the license or for the purposes of the company, it would be domiciled at the residence as opposed to, well, I do most of my stuff out of D5 or whatever, you know, for the, because of the range or, and, uh, I'm just using this as a home office.
That's it. And, and again, my, by site is going to be a robust site that will be able to, uh, I mean, most firearms purchasers now in terms of accessories and those gun cleanings are, are online sales. I buy all the little small things, anything you can imagine. I mean, Amazon's a big, you know, big purchaser for, for that kind of stuff as well, believe it or not, even though they don't allow firearms. So, uh, online sales are big in that area. That's where I tend to spend most of my, my time with most, moving most of my product. Um, again, firearms is going to be a smaller portion of that, so.
Excuse me. Well, one more question. Uh, I'm getting the impression that you are new to this or have you been a firearms, uh, dealer for a while?
I, I am not a dealer now. Uh, as I explained, maybe you didn't hear me, is that, uh, this is the, one of the first big hurdles in the process before I apply for that license, because the ATF, their biggest reasons for denying applicants is zoning and or HOA approval.
Okay.
So before I apply, I have to get both approvals before I even start the application process.
Okay, so the ATF does allow operations out of homes?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Nothing else. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing this evening.
You don't have nothing else to add here?
Nothing else to add. I appreciate the question.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ravitch?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Rock?
Aye.
Self, aye. Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
You're not obligated to stay here if you're, uh, so inclined to, you know, hit a white castle or something this evening.
No, I see, I see. No, I, I, I appreciate it. Where's time and the questions, uh, results are then, obviously you guys vote on that and that's posted.
Yep, and then, uh, we submit our findings and deliberation discussion, et cetera, to the village board.
Okay.
Um, and then, you know, they're obviously the final say in the process.
Sure, sure.
Uh, whether we amend or create ordinance to move forward.
And the ordinance will not be exclusive to your proposed, your needs. They've given us a whole.
See, I got the letter from Mr. Schuster, both from the HOA and they're based on those, based on the village, uh.
Well, if, if you are looking for brick and mortar, we do have a nice state street that, uh,
yeah, I know, and the state street could use some more businesses, you know, yeah.
That's why they've lumped you in with piano lessons and daycares.
Ah.
We've got a lot of folks, a lot of different businesses to review here.
Well, I'm sure COVID helped start some of those up, maybe I, I don't know. There's a lot of people working on them all these days, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thanks. Uh, agenda item B for this evening. I will entertain a motion to recommend approval of the text amendment regarding home occupations. What is the motion? We need the motion to recommend approval of the text amendment regarding home occupations. Second.
Mr. Mark, I just want to make one thing clear. The, the current way the regulations are read, it does state that, um, the presence of firearms would not be allowed. So, for example, the, the singular, you know, person from Florida that were a firearm has it waiting for him to get back to Illinois would not be allowed based on these, how the regulations are written now. That was drafted that way based on the village board's discussion, so I do with that what you will, but I just wanted to make that clear so everybody understood.
Yeah, I'm trying to adhere to our new procedure of, uh, giving the motion and second to then discuss and deliver.
Oh, fair enough.
Yeah.
I have a question for Josh. You said that firearms is prohibited in this text amendment?
So maybe I should just provide some larger context. So, uh, firearms is not the only reason this was brought. The village became aware of, you know, all kinds of home occupations, people cutting hair in their home, people selling craft items from their home, um, lots of online businesses since COVID. So this is a, a larger kind of cleanup ordinance. Um, the current ordinance only allows a handful, I think maybe eight home occupations. And so rather than try to deal with an actual list, the village board decided to do or would like to do what other communities in the area have done, and that is to create a set of, um, form-based regulations where as long as things are inside and it's not obnoxious and it's not hazardous and there's not a ton of people in and out, you know, uh, all those regulations that are included in the text amendment here, then any type of home occupation would be allowed. Now, they did express concern over certain types of hazardous items such as firearms, ammunition, fertilizer, or other dangerous chemicals. So those specific things are listed as examples. Um, and just the presence of those are not allowed other than personally-honed properties. So obviously a firearms dealer can have their own personally-honed firearms on their property. Um, so.
Where does it say that in this, in this text amendment? I don't, I don't see that anywhere.
Uh, item C, number 10.
Item C, number 10.
Page two. On page two, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, do we have a second? For the agenda item B, seconded. Roll call, please. Ravitch?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Um, what are we, what was the motion for? I'm sorry.
Uh, for agenda item B.
Open up the discussion. Excuse me.
So this, this, this is our, you know, the process that we kind of discussed as to, you know, the motion, the second, and then deliberation discussion.
Okay.
So your current roll call vote would be to approve, you know, which is.
I vote aye.
The motion is to approve.
Well, he says that every time, but it's for us to open up the discussion and then final approval with amendments or with annotation comes next. I agree the wording is vague and it's, it's what we've been doing.
I know, it's, it's the process that we've, we've been trying to steer towards.
You, you wouldn't, you wouldn't take a, a roll call vote at this point. You would discuss before your vote.
All right. Uh, in that case, I apologize for doing it wrong yet again. We'll get a motion in a second, so now we have discussion. Uh, well, we do have a motion in a second. Can we deliberate now?
Yes.
Okay.
First question I have, Chairman Morocco, is, is this, is this draft text, uh, drawn up by the board?
I, I can speak to that. So this was brought to the board a couple of meetings ago for general discussion. And then based on their discussion, staff drafted this set of regulations. At their most recent meeting last week, they reviewed these regulations and there was a consensus for them. But obviously it still needs to go through the public hearing process and any recommendations this commission might make.
Okay, so, so the board did review this draft text already?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So for the purposes of our visitor, or the, the public who spoke, well, if, if we were to recommend and the board were to approve this as written, he could domicile his business in his home and have his license address be at his home. He just could never have any of the ammo, knives or guns at his home that were involved with the business. He'd have to have a third party at a brick and mortar site, storage unit, he'd have to have something else. Um, so.
Which sounds, sounds like that's what his plan is, is it?
Yeah, well, I think he'd like maybe for a, a shipment or something to be delivered to his house. As long as somebody had signed for it, was the impression I got. Um, technically that would be a violation. He'd have to get it delivered somewhere else.
Maybe picking it up. They'll typically come to the fire internal, typically have to pick it up.
Yeah.
Except you'd, he'd be the place where you'd have to pick it up. I mean, he wants to be that FFL.
Right.
So in lieu of a gun store, he would be the person. So now where he'd tell you, hey, come to this address.
He did also mention that he would possibly also be going to the post office to pick up the delivery.
I see, yeah.
He has to. They won't, they won't ship a firearm.
Okay. Well, that's not our business if he's actually.
Cause it does state other than legally on the personal property.
Right.
So any firearms, based on this ordinance draft, any firearms at his home would have to be his personally.
Right, they can't be part of the business. Again, it doesn't hurt my feelings. I'm just, again, I don't know if we're doing this guy any great favors, but I don't mind the way this is drafted either.
I think it gives him a little bit more leeway, you know, but I, I think with way ten is worded that what he talked about on occasion, that's not going to be able to, to happen or at least not happen appropriately.
I will, let's see, get sneaking in.
I'll also just note that the staff did make the board aware that, um, most of what is taking place in these ordinances are mechanisms for enforcement upon complaint, because, you know, obviously the village isn't going to be watching people's homes to make sure that they're following these to the letter. So, uh, of course, if you received a package at the post office and drove it home, staff and the village probably wouldn't know unless somebody knew about it complained.
I feel like this as written is reasonable and intuitive and, um, and it makes sense. Whether, again, you're a hairdresser or a piano teacher, a music teacher or whatever, it, 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 no extra, you know, no signage, no extra outbuildings, no storage outside, no extra public entrances in and out, uh, no increased traffic, no not just fumes, no, it, it, the garbage would have to be in keeping with residential.
No employees.
Yeah, employees in and out, no extra parking. It should be all very subtle and, and probably what people are doing already. Yeah, employees in and out, no extra parking. It should be all very subtle and, and probably what people are doing already anyway. And it doesn't stop anybody from just having a home office, like a telecommuter or something like that. It's.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything involving animals would be under the purview of animal control and those existing codes.
One would imply, though, that if he is going to the post office to pick up the firearms, then taking them back home. Again, I do understand what Josh said.
Just like any law, it's up to him to follow it.
Yeah, we're, we're never going to be able to keep everybody to follow every rule, or there's no way. It's more, it's more going to be based off of a means to be able to deal with it for the complaint purpose than anything else.
And he could do that if he had a brick and mortar store across the street anyway, next to their reserve, you know. Right?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Section G, uh, 2A. It says attendance of up to 12 children for daycare center. I thought that number was six. Where, where'd this number 12 come from?
Be honest, I don't know. Well, I know where the number 12 came from. So the village board looked at the Village of Huntley's regulations, which is what this is largely based off of. I did not check to see if the village already had a limit, so that could be a.
Well, the, the reason I bring this up, Josh, is because I have a neighbor who has a daycare and she has told me that she's limited to six. That's the only reason I know that.
It may also be a DCFS state law that, you know, would obviously supersede 12 in this case, but I'm checking our code now to see if it's in our code already at six. Good catch, Bill.
Well, I don't know if it's correct, but that's what, that's what my neighbor told me.
And daycares are largely regulated by the state, not us.
So, so Hampshire has no regulation?
I haven't found one. I'll keep looking, while you guys, if you have anything else to talk about, I'll tell you now.
Okay.
So on the matter of the daycares, I don't see anything in the village code that restricts it to six. I did a quick Google search for the state of Illinois, and they have all kinds of regulations about, you know, up to eight children under the, under 12 years of age, no more than six under five years of age. So they have all kinds of regulations attaching age to number of kids you're allowed to have, and it looks like it also might be based on the amount of space you have.
Okay.
So my, my hypothesis is that that's a state restriction on your, your example.
Okay, thanks, Josh. Most of the children, I think all the children that she said that, that she cares for, I think are under six, so maybe that's, or under eight. Maybe that's where that number six came from.
True.
Thank you. And I'm assuming that fire, rather fireworks would be included under the category of explosives. Would that be correct?
I suppose that would be up to the zoning administrator to, to interpret. The village manager is currently the zoning administrator. I, I, I can't really speak for, for his thoughts on that. If you wanted to add the word fireworks in there to be safe, that's your purview.
Yeah, exactly. I know, I know some people, not in Hampshire, but some people where I used to live sell fireworks out of their home. And we certainly don't want that. At least I don't want that. I can't speak for anybody else.
I think if that's something the commission feels strongly about, you should amend the regulations to add fireworks in.
I don't think it's necessary explosives. It's right on your, it would fall under explosives.
Yeah, because they fall, the fireworks fall under either a 1.3 or a 1.4 explosives, so.
Is that a fire regulation? Perfect. I think you're safe then.
So I'd also kind of in a similar vein to the number of children, the currently allowed number of pupils is just one currently, and then we're looking to increase that to four. We got to the. I'm sorry, page three, G.
The trumpet teacher or the homeschooler? Is that what that's?
Yeah. Item G, two, two B.
Do you know where in the code it says one pupil right now?
On the agenda supplement under the analysis, it's listed under teaching musical instruments or dancing, but limited to one pupil at a time.
True. That, that was not a conscious decision to take it to four. It's from the village of Huntley's regulations, which the village board seemed to approve of.
I think we might need a little extra clarity on the number of children, just to make sure that we're not actually looking to attempt to supersede state law.
Probably wouldn't, even if, even if.
Yeah, but I mean, we might as well get into congruency as much as possible in text. State supersedes it regardless.
Do you want to keep it in one or are you willing to?
Any discussion on that? I mean, obviously, if somebody is learning a musical instrument, would you four people at once or any other, you know, home-based teaching, training businesses?
I think one is two.
I think four is the right number.
The other question is, at what point does the spirit of this being to keep you from having an obvious commercial enterprise and, and, and going contrary to the traffic look, appearance, aesthetic, whatever of a, of a regular residence, was a number that, that now tips the scale?
And the majority of the rest of the wording does state that, you know, subject to the parking available to that domicile, garage, driveway, street, you know, by the time you've got your own personal vehicle, possibly four students if they're all adults.
Right. I wouldn't block it four. If you ask me, just pull a number out of high school, two was a good number.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree, actually, too. It'd be a decent.
I think four is right. What if you have somebody doing a cooking class or something like that?
Good call.
We're not talking, we're not talking, you know, 12 people running around the backyard.
Four cars on the driveway, that's not grossly, you're not Walmart now, right?
It's only a problem if it's, you know, like small houses, almost no parking, then it becomes a problem.
And it would be subject to somebody complaining about it.
Right.
Not forcing, okay, I would like to say I wouldn't, wouldn't storm off and kick the dog with the sad.
I don't think it's too much. I think it's too restrictive.
I know, I am just going, going back for a second on the, on the daycare portion. I can't find the exact definitions, but I know there are some definitions in under ICC for those particular things, and there is, there is a line in there somewhere that talks about having the daycare in your residence, and I don't know, I can't locate it right this second, but I know it's, I know it's in there somewhere.
Think we should make a regulation to have that reviewed?
I think we should review it, just based off of, of a little bit more clarity as to where that number came from.
Yeah, personally speaking, I think 12 kids is way too much.
I don't think the number really matters. Again, the state has say on it.
What was the maximum, Mr. Ray, you found on the DCFS side or the other one you say? Kids were older or some mix? What was the maximum for an in-home daycare?
So I just see right. I lost that pinch. I know, I know there was several different categories based on the number of kids. I didn't see a total. I'm looking now. Then again, you could approve this and, and, you know, say it's subject to, you know, further staff review without forcing it to come back here if, if that's what you wanted. Be happy to, you know, get a better number. If maybe the state has a hard limit at eight or something, then, you know, we can change it to eight before it goes to the village board.
At what point is a firearm not explosive? Sorry, I hate fireworks. The, so I got my own personal Instagram. Sparklers, poppers, roman candles, those are all explosives.
They all fall under the, the category of the 1.4, I believe 1.3 is commercial explosives. Or I may be transposing that, but they're, they're all, sparklers are, are included in there too.
The main reason I'm bringing up the, the children, the number of children is, yeah, obviously due to the nature of daycare and children themselves involved with managing that many children, actually, I'm sorry. If, if our ordinances are written and on a regular scheme than state law, people are going to look for that and follow that first until something goes wrong.
Well, I mean.
Well, they, they wouldn't necessarily be able to because they wouldn't get their license until they abide it by the state.
Exactly.
So even, I, I mean, I think it would be good something, something good to review so we're not contradicting anything, but at the same time, they will get their license.
Or just reworded to basically state that, you know, attend, attendance of, of whatever number of children according to state law.
If you want to be nonspecific, yeah, there's also another provision in the, in the text you have before you that says you shall apply with all other state, local, and, or local, state, and federal regulations. So you've covered there.
As opposed to stipulating a number of any type, just make another pointer, hey, in order to do X, Y, and Z, you need to follow state law on this particular matter, and that would lead them towards, just as another.
Well, actually, what I'm looking, I'm looking at a chart now, and you might, you might not want to do that, because, for example, if it's infants, you can have a maximum group size of 12 if you have a one to four child to staff ratio, and your child to staff ratio, your staff could be husband and wife and, you know.
Okay.
Or, or if it's three to five years of age, the maximum group size is 20, if you have the correct ratio, which is one to 10. Or, you know, 30 for school-aged children if you have.
Good thing we're doing more review.
Well, that's, you know, 12 would be the limit then. So DCFS would allow you to have, for example, up to 20, but local ordinance would require you to have more, no more than 12 in this situation.
So what was, what was the ratio for infants?
Infants is a child to staff ratio, one to four, or staff to child ratio, one to four, maximum group size of 12, and then the maximum group sizes get larger and the ratios get more lenient as, as the child's age goes up. For example, school-aged children, kindergarten to age 12, maximum group size of 30, staff to child ratio of one to 20. So if you have a husband and a wife, they could have 30 kids under DCFS regulations, at least, at least according to this chart. So you might want to limit it to 12 maximum, no matter what.
12, that sounds a bad number, doesn't it? Yeah, you got 30 parents coming in. They drop off and pick up.
There's probably other things in here related to space and.
Bathroom facilities.
Right. Yeah, there are things in the building code related to bathroom facilities would certainly come into play.
And at some point, too, once you get into certain levels, then one of my favorite topics always comes back to, to bite is sprinkler systems also. Because if it's going off the state and some of the state codes, they go by 2015 codes versus us at the 2006. So they're in areas where certain things may require sprinklers or some, which at those higher numbers that most likely these homeowners aren't going to want to do.
So I do believe this regulation was intended by, at least Huntley, to be more restrictive than what might be allowed by the state. Now, if you wanted to drop 12 down to eight or something you're more comfortable with, you can absolutely recommend with that change.
I know officially for the record, myself, I would prefer to be more restrictive, just because, again, there is that bell curve almost of infants age. I, I think that item A is a little too broadly painted when the state laws are obviously much larger than we were originally aware, but children obviously can be any sort of groupings of levels. I mean, you could have six infants and three eight-year-olds, nine-year-olds, 10, 12, 14, 15. I, I think a simple, and again, this is just my perspective on this, is a simple one-sentence description, just blanket allowing 12 children is a little too.
We're putting too much focus on this number 12. It's, the state supersedes all regardless.
Yeah, it goes purely for licensed daycares. Because we can have a non-licensed daycare.
An unlicensed daycare has a very small limit. I think it's, it's either three or four kids that are allowed to have.
Okay, so that doesn't.
And are, are those state ordinances for actual daycare? As opposed to operating out of your home?
Fair question. Yeah, it's supposed to work in more. So daycare home license.
Okay, not, not, yes, daycare included at home.
All right, so officially speaking, we are requesting more modifications. We're sticking with four persons for receiving a private instruction. 12 children, no other multiplication, explosives, we're all discussing, delivering, that includes fireworks.
I'll make sure I get a, maybe we'll get an official opinion from the Hampshire Fire Protection District about that before we take.
Hope you're making any recommendations that we would request or require, strongly advise further review ICC daycare, DCFS, anything? Mr. Rosetti?
Uh, what are you asking me?
Any further recommendations, requirements, anything that we request that the board look further deeper into on any of these items?
Are we going to just ask them to look into it, or are, are we going to make recommendations? In, in other words, are we going to say, since we only want six children, or are we just going to ask them to look into their, to their, to their attendance of 12? I thi, I think we should make a definite recommendation, not just ask them to look into it. So I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we amend item G 2A to read the attendance of up to six children at any one time may be allowed in a daycare home operation as a home op, as a home occupation. I'd make that motion.
All right, uh, do we have any seconds for the motion to approve the draft text in front of us with the edit to item G 2A limiting to six children?
I feel six is a little restrictive. I don't mind picking a number or to recommend. I feel six is a little restrictive. I don't mind picking a number uh or to recommend, rather than leaving it open-ended. Um but we're gonna hurt, I fear we're going to hurt some existing businesses that way.
Yeah, I think it's too restrictive.
The folks are abiding by DCFS rules and fire code, um I don't know that six, the traffic of having six kids come to and from daycare is going to be burdensome on the, on the subdivision or community.
Um how many, how many current home occupiers do we have in the village? Okay.
Does somebody else have a different number they like?
I'm happy with twelve.
Mr. Phil, my next twelve.
All right, Mr. Rosetti, regretfully, we did not get a second on your motion.
Um I think if we're gonna change it, 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 there needs to be more background, more information that we get to make that decision.
Got it. So uh I will attempt a motion, I will entertain a motion to accept the draft text with the notification that item G two A be reviewed in further depth by village staff to determine additional state and or other governmental rules and regulations on the matter.
I can get back into that in a second, bud.
All right, Mr. Ravich?
Hi.
Brad?
Um.
Brad?
Hi.
So, hi, Mr. Rosetti?
Nay.
It's four ayes and one nay. Motion passed with the draft text with the amendment that item G two A can be further reviewed to ensure that we are in alignment as much as possible with the state and or additional considerations. I don't know exactly what those numbers are or the rules, laws and regulations, but I think that's something that the village, I think that's our goal there is, obviously, want someone to think of the children. I, you know, again, working out of the home, I think that's our goal with that one is six children, twelve children, what are the actual first rules as opposed to just a single sentence allowing a blanket number of children? That was our goal there, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm.
Uh any further questions, comments? I will now entertain a motion to authorize myself to draft this all up and report the results of agenda item five B to the village board of trustees.
I'll make a motion.
Second. I'll call Mr. Phil.
Mr. Ravich? Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Brad? Hi. So, hi, Mr. Rosetti?
Nay.
Four ayes, one nay. You've no open public comment this evening, Mr. Ray, correct?
Correct.
The announcements that I'm not aware of, Mr. Ray, I don't think we have the agenda item for, our list for next meeting.
I, I, I didn't send out a list, um but we do have two completed applications for uh zoning relief matters that will be at the June thirteenth meeting. Mr. Hugh here and our village clerk, Lendo Vasquez, will be publishing those in the Daily Herald. Um they are related to, first, at one forty at Washington, a rezoning from B one to B three, as well as a variance to the side yard setback for an accessory structure that they want to put kind of in the, the rear side yard there. Um that's a commercial property, and obviously, we just want to do a little bit more with it than what they're allowed to right now with B one. And then the other application is a sign variance package for road ranger. They would like more signs than they're currently allowed, um which they did have for several years. Uh road ranger was built and set up before they were annexed to the village, and then they came into the village, and now they wanted to change their signs, and so they appropriately got a uh a reply for a building permit, and, and they were notified that they needed some zoning relief, they want to do what they want to do. There may also be, I, I doubted at this point, but there may also be a final plat before you for the Hampshire National Logistics Park.
Okay. I'm sure Mr. Hoffman's gonna have fun with that one. Correct, Rich? Uh Mr. Rosetti, any further announcements, questions, comments?
Yeah, um I would really, we've talked about this once before at least. I would really like more than a two-day notice before we have a meeting. Um I didn't, I didn't have enough time to review, I don't know if anybody else did. I didn't have enough time to really dig into this text amendment uh or this drafted text. And I would like to see us have a little more time so we could do our job a little bit better.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the fault for that, Mr. Rosetti. Um I didn't want to send anything out until the village board had finished their deliberations on the matter uh this past Thursday, so then I sent out the home occupation information on Friday, um which was a little short notice.
Well, if it, if it's important enough for us to discuss, why don't we just reschedule the meeting for, for another day? So that we have enough time to review everything.
In this particular case, it's because you had already set the public hearing for tonight, and we would have had to republish everything for another date, which isn't impossible, it's just we avoided it. But I understand your comments.
Well, I, I, I do appreciate your position, Josh, and I thank you for all you do. But I really would like a little more time to go through this stuff before we talk about it.
All right, any additional questions, comments, notices? I will entertain a motion to ensure, to make the motion. One second. One call please.
Ravich? Hi.
Brad?
So, Brad? Rosetti?
Hi.